So I'll give a couple of minutes. Evening Jim, you're playing Magical Link. And so I think all that's here is going to be here, so I'll call the Special Media Council for Wednesday, December 9th to order at at 5:20. And ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Seeing none. I will do the traditional land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chippewa Tri-council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Brahman First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five, treaty 16, and included within Williams treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory here in Wendat, and the historic homelands of the Ma'atii, that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I have a motion here by Koszowski, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that the contents of Special Media Council, Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation Annual General Meeting for December 9th, 2020 be approved as amended, the addition being of addition of draft 2019 audited financial statements. Counsel, you've heard the motion, comments or questions? Seeing none, excuse me, all in favor? Thank you, that carries. With that, we have a presentation, I do for a presentation, Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, December 20th, sorry, December 2020 update. And I believe that is Mr. Kernahan.
And here he is. We'll need the assistance of Sherry when you're ready, Sherry. This is the official Midland Bay Landing Annual General Meeting with the shareholder being the town of Midland. So welcome all to the annual general meeting. Next slide, please. So today we're going to have a report from the board. We're going to talk about the achievements to date, the work plan for 2021, financial report to October 31st, and the draft budget for 2021, next. We last met, as you know, in September, so the version that you're seeing today is a bit abbreviated. So achievements to date, we've continued with the environmental approval process. And as you recently heard, the Ministry of Environment has come back with a number of additional technical requests for information. And as a result, we're going to be delayed until the spring. And then after that, we go into the Ministry of Environment review period, which could be three or four months or possibly longer, depending upon whether they are satisfied with the technical information being provided. We did engage American Land Development, and then we terminated their contract in June of 20. We collaborated with the town for the grant application for significant infrastructure, but unfortunately, the application was unsuccessful, next. We developed an interim use for the property, which we've talked to you about before, to enable public access to an area of the site connected to the trail with a mock-up of the waterfront promenade and a parquet in order to get the public involved in the property to show image boards of the ultimate development. The intention of this was to do just that, to begin to get the public engaged and imagine what the Midland Bay Landing site can be. Unfortunately, COVID came along and council has deferred this work until 2021. We have over the last year had a number of engagements with potential developers to talk about their interest, and their interest remains high. They have all said they are in agreement with the master plan in general terms. So that is a positive response. We prepared some financial models to understand the estimated capital cost of development and potential sale values to figure out the financial viability. We also developed compelling overview for presentation to politicians and others to describe Midland Bay Landing and its potential. And we investigated a potential global designation opportunity that would become the branding and marketing driver for Midland Bay Landing and Norosimco, and we'll talk about that a bit later. Next. So the work plan for 2020, we have completed most of the things, the didn't update the federal provincial grant that has been completed unsuccessfully. The interim uses for the town, as I said, was deferred. The marketing and branding, we'll talk a little bit about that too. And the Ministry of Environment has now been delayed until next year. Next. So that's what happened over the past year. Our plan going forward, starting in 2021, is to have further engagement with the public to expand awareness. We want to develop seawall options, develop some site remediation work details and tender if required, develop a functional servicing review, develop the interim use, now we're going to, next, next year, we're going to develop it and execute it on the site so that people will gain access next year, subject to the COVID, and when we can start doing that and open it for use. We're going to develop marketing materials to engage with more investors and developers to gauge and solicit their input and interest. And lastly, we're going to commission a study about the potential designation opportunity. So a lot of this, what we're doing next year is to get the site and the property as ready as possible for developers to remove as much risk as possible, so they have an understanding of what it is. You can't just start immediately of pushing dirt around. We need to have the developers engage with us and understand the risk, and so what we're doing is a lot of work to prepare to start as quickly as possible. Because otherwise, there are going to be too many questions and the timeframe will expand. So the purpose of this is to get ready for engagement with developers with a number of the questions that they will usually ask, such as the seawall functional servicing, those things we can talk to them knowledgeably about. Next. So how have we done this year financially? Up to October the 31st, you will see we have spent considerably less than anticipated so far on the year to date. Our consultant fees are well below budget principally because there is no executive director and a small working group of the board is doing that work at the present time at no cost. The honorariums are below budget because some of the members are not not taking any honorariums, so that is beneficial. At the end of the day, year to date, we are 160,000 variance from the budget, so this is very positive. We are not spending the amount that was originally anticipated in the budget, principally because of those two things, and we've received a county grant for 50,000 for marketing, which has certainly helped. At the present time, it's sitting in the bank, we've received it. Next slide. So having looked at 2020, we have put forward a draft budget for 2021. It looks different, you can see that the operating costs are still forecast to be the same. What's different next year is, as described in the work plan, the engineering remediation, seawall, functional servicing plan are all activities that we need to do to engage with those developers, and we not want to spend some additional marketing money and branding. So there is more money proposed next year, but it's principally for these services to get ready. And lastly, the deferred work that was deferred for the interim use is back on the budget for next year. Consequently, the ask is considerably bigger. However, the 250,000 has been deferred by council, so it's not a net new amount. It has been moved from 2020 to 2021. The other, as I said, is engineering activity. That's the end of our report, are there any questions?
Sorry, Costa Gordon.
Thank you.
Okay, leave it up, Sherry, that's fine.
So I've had, needless to say, there's lots of people always talking about Midland Bay Landing. Not so much, well, some people about the corporation itself, but mostly about the project and the fact that it's kind of in the eyes of the public, it's kind of just stalled. Clearly, there's some good rationale as to why things aren't moving forward quickly, but one thing that was brought to my attention that I had no knowledge of was this document called a marketing sounding opportunity document. And maybe it would be helpful if, you know, from your perspective, you could explain what that document is and when it's used in the process, and I'll have a couple of questions about that, once you sort of bring us all up to speed on what this MSO is.
Well, I'm not sure the precise document you're referring to, Counselor Gordon.
Oh, okay.
We have developed a one pager that we are using as a guide to talk to developers and also to talk to the politicians to raise the awareness of Midland Bay Landing and its benefit, not just to Midland, but to the whole area. So there's a guide as really talking points to talk with potential developers. It's usually a two-way conversation with them to explore their interests.
Okay, that may be the same document. Basically, there's a point in it where it describes the process. And I guess the concerns that have been brought to me is that we may be, you know, inhibiting good creative discourse from potential developers because we're not basically, it tells you right in here that anything that they share with you is not their intellectual property and not to be deemed proprietary. So the concern that I'm getting relayed to me from people in the development community is that they don't really want to give you some of their conceptual ideas on what could be used that fits with the plan because you can take them and do things with them or perhaps relay them to somebody else, and they just don't have any protection that what they share with you is is protected because they have to sign this document that basically states, any ideas, images, documents that are provided to the board will be deemed not to be proprietary. So I was just wondering if the language in this document is something that's standard practice in the development community, or if perhaps we're, you know, you know, sprinkling some pebbles in the path that could be inhibiting some good discourse around development potential for this property.
Well, as you read part of that document, I believe it was a a draft document, I'm not sure whether it's ever been finalized. But certainly in the conversations we've had with developers, they're prepared to talk with us and understand that it's a confidential discussion with us. And right now, nobody has come forward with any specific plans, they've all acknowledged the master plan, but they have not brought forward any new and different ideas in our conversation. But right now, we've not seen any impediments to conversation with developers.
Okay, well, maybe, I guess I'm just relaying then on behalf of the people that have spoken to me that it's causing some concern that there could be more interest if perhaps we assured the people that were willing to share their visions with the board confidentially, that it would remain their intellectual property, even though they've shared it with the board, but I'll leave that, that's kind of getting into the weeds. I'm going to leave that up to you guys, and I'm just telling you it's been shared with me, and I would hate for us to put any impediments in the way of trying to get a developer on board to do something with this property. And in the meantime, of course, there's the push for the rethink and revisiting the master plan. And, you know, I expect to see some more presentations from the community in the coming months over the winter time, so. I just really wanted to ask you about that, because I had never heard of that that document before, when I read it, I could understand where the concerns are coming from. My other quick question for you, if I could, is I saw some photos on online today. It appears that somebody, I don't know if it's the corporation or the town of Midland, has started to shore up that sort of north west area by the parking lot at the bottom of William Street where people fish, where the porta potty used to be, which vanished again. And it appears that there's some some stone that's being placed there to try and, you know, prevent any further erosion, which was causing a lot of concern as our some of our land was washing into Georgian Bay. And is that something that you've done, or is that something the town of Midland did?
So we addressed this with the town, and the town has undertaken to have it done. There was a considerable amount of rock that was placed, the access to the water, the launching ramp, and in winter where the snowmobiles enter the ice that has still remained, and they put a lot of rock there to stabilize the wall. So that has been completed.
Great, that that's great, and do you know anything about the porta potty that that vanished, does that part of the construction?
I have no idea what happened to the porta potty.
Very good, we'll get to the bottom of that at another point then. Thank you, that that's, that's good, the ask needless to say is quite staggering number to look at when you compare it to last year, but you've explained some of that, so.
In in order to keep this project moving, we're going to need to spend some more money.
Thank you.
The one thing I would add to that conversation is that people have concerns about privacy or how the process, they should contact the board directly. So that they get it from the horse's mouth about what is and isn't a reality, I would suggest they do that. Then it's the contact information, I think it's on the on the website for the board.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sherry, do you?
Are there any other questions? I'm having a, I can't see everyone, oh, I can now.
There we go.
There we are, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kernahan with respect to Coster May?
Thank you so much for the presentation, yeah, it was a nice little brief update from the update that we had a few, a few weeks ago, a few months ago. I guess just the comment would be, if we're going to have annual meetings, is there anything that we can be updated on or having community updates in the spring or in the summertime, just in terms of status updates, especially if we're going to be rolling out, you know, some interim site usage? Because that's just a concern to me is just try to communicate the story of the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation and how, you know, where we've gone since the rethink and really telling the story, I think there's a lot of people that don't know all of all the board members, and that's a profiles of some of these members that I'd love to highlight, especially, you know, Mr. Douglas's involvement with McMaster Innovation Park, you know, these are the types of projects that we're trying to model ourselves on. Just a thought about how do we communicate with the public of the team that we've assembled and our next steps as opposed to just having every year, you know, a standard annual meeting update, is there any thoughts about communications into the new year? Thank you.
Well, as you can see from the work plan, the very first item on the work plan is to engage the public more, communicate more with them to raise the awareness of A, the project, and B, what activities we are pursuing and what conversations we're having when we can. So the intention certainly is to raise the awareness of what activities are going on and engage the public by way of engaging them on what this interim use is going to be, to invite them down to the property to see a mock-up of what the promenade could be and how they would interface with the water.
Coster May.
So just as a quick follow-up, just so that everyone's kind of following along the process, this is kind of a very uninteresting period of the process, because there's a lot of open-ended questions, and there's a lot of, you know, who do we partner with, you know, and is there a way to kind of basically over communicate kind of the the next steps that we're going to undertaking, obviously trying to find a development partner, we're looking at environmental assessment stuff. Is there a way that we can kind of, I don't know, not create a game plan, but kind of, and not a timeframe where we're saying we're going to hit these dates, but just kind of an overview of what's the steps that we're going to be taking, especially for the next year, or even the next couple of years?
That's correct.
I thought that those major activities were outlined in the work plan that we just walked through. But the the key is that there will be more communication between the corporation and the general public to keep them informed as to what's going on.
Coster May.
So this is the final point is that that's why there's a lot of curiosity around, you know, private sector partners, and a lot of that stuff unfortunately has to be done in private, confidential, anything under real estate negotiations, it it's it's important that we do that in behind closed doors for many reasons, and we're permitted to under the municipal act. I guess that is the big question mark that people have is, you know, what's the timeframe to do the dance and to find a partner? Because all the other stuff that we're doing is great, and I think it's going to be very well appreciated, the interim site usage, communications, remedial site stuff, I guess just that's the big unknown is how long it takes to find the right partner. You know, how long does it take the courtship period? So that's just kind of, I think, the big question that we all have, and I think the community has. So anything that the board can do to to really set the realistic expectations would be appreciated, so I just, that's just a further comment on that, so thank you so much.
Hey, Costa, Costa Koszowski.
Thank you very much, just a supplement to Counselor Mayne's comments, there was a Facebook page created in 2015 for Midland Bay Landing, and I think it being that it's already established, I'm not sure if it's under the umbrella of our communications manager, but I'm not sure who would want to take that on, but I think we have a huge opportunity here to document the process and get people excited about it. We can take photos with the first, you know, shovels at the ground to the next part where we're tying up huge cruise ships from Ritz Carlton, so I think we have a huge opportunity here, and I agree with Counselor Mayne, I think it's, there's never too early to start getting on social media and start talking about this stuff, getting the community excited. There's not a lot to get excited about these days anywhere, not just Midland, anywhere in the world right now, so I think it's again, something that we could aim and showcase as something that we're working on, something positive that we are building. And I think, you know, you might even attract developers through this, you know, through the hype and through the attention that it gets on social media, so I just want to supplement the Counselor Mayne and support him on his comments, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for Mr. Kernahan?
Well, just in response, thank you. We do want to examine the website that has been there for a while, we need to refresh it and bring current activities to the website so that people can see what we're doing. It goes hand in hand.
Thank you, Costa Cunningham.
Yes, just to continue that conversation, I wonder if we could port the midland.ca page over to engagingmidland.ca so that people can register to follow the project, you do have a work plan now, which turns it into a project, even though we don't have really specific dates that that will happen, it's kind of a moving, shifting critical path. But with engagingmidland.ca, the real advantage there is that people can sign up and then receive those updates as emails rather than having to keep coming back to the site, or going back to the Facebook page to see if there are updates. Gives a nice place to see whether things have changed without having to go hunting through a website that can be a little more challenging.
I would agree that that probably is a positive thing to do to improve the navigation through the website so that people can find things or actually have messages pushed out to them. We will discuss that with communications folks.
Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, I've got to tell you, I've been enjoying watching these things on YouTube, so much more accessible than trying to tee up the right time on Rogers, and I've been watching the the meetings, and I think the last one, or maybe it was the second last one, we talked about the seawall and and the $14 million or something like that, that it's going to need to be poured into it to fix that, I'm assuming that's the steel part of the seawall and not the concrete part where people fish off of by the aforementioned parking lot. What's the like, we didn't pay, how much do we pay for the property versus what it's going to cost to fix the seawall? Versus what this is going to, how attractive is this is going to be to any developer with an unfixed seawall? So I guess what I'm trying to go for here is if we paid like, I don't know, four million for the property, please correct me. And we got to dump 14 million into the seawall, and heaven knows how much else for remediation. And then we need to find a developer who wants to buy this from us. Presumably with these things done, or else they would want to come in and maybe take it for free from us, because they got to put millions and millions into this. I'm just wondering how the math works on the viability of this piece of land, given, you know, that its current state and what the costs are going to be looking like.
As I said, we did do some financial modeling in order to look at the land and including looking at what remediation, seawall, and other activities that need to be done in order to look at the financial viability of the value to be placed on the land, because for a developer, the land cost is very important. So if the land cost is too high, we're not going to be attracting people. So therefore, we need to look at how we want to structure an arrangement, knowing that there are costs associated with this particular property of the seawall and remediation, but the remediation, as we understand it, is not as significant as we originally thought. And there are strategies to mitigate at reasonable cost. So it is part of the financial modeling, we're very aware, the seawall is key to the property. So we need to address that, and that was part of the application that we put forward to the federal government. And we want to pursue other avenues to get some infrastructure funding for this seawall. And it will actually tie into something you're going to talk about later tonight is cruise ships. So we need to be looking at not just the seawall, but a far larger vision of the association of the Midland Bay Landing property, the harbor, the downtown, how do you tie all of this together? So that it's a cohesive whole.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up, because I wasn't sure if we could talk about that in this meeting, because it's coming at the next meeting, but that $50,000 that we're going to talk about in the council meeting in that report to fix up the seawall, is that the concrete seawall where people stand and fish? Or are we talking about fixing up some of those steel plate things, whatever you call them, that's holding back the dirt right now?
So the seawall that we're referring to is the sheet piled steel wall that runs along where the old coal dock was, that's not concrete. The the vertical wall is sheet piled steel. Some of it further down has collapsed over the years, some of it on the east end where people go fishing is in pretty good shape.
Okay, and then my last naive question is, you know, if it turns out that 14 million or whatever it's going to be by the time we get around to getting financing, because we all know things go up. If that's too big, steep a price to pay, what are our options for, same thing with remediation, what are our options for just pulling the piling, letting some of the land, you know, go to the bottom, and now we have a nice slope and a beach there, and we do something else with the property without having to dump 14 million in, just pull the steel out, get some money for the metal, and just let her, you know, let it become a beach?
I don't think it is the day to speculate on on such an idea. It is, we are in a deep water port. The the depth off the wall is 30 to 35 feet. So envisioning a beach in that location is likely not to work.
Okay, thanks.
Coster Koszowski.
Your worship, I know it's an obscure comment, and I'm not even sure I can verify that it's true, but Costco puts chicken, and they don't make a profit off it in the back of their store, so that you go through Costco and you buy a whole bunch of other stuff. Well, they don't make any money off the chicken, you've gone into the store, you spent your money. What I'm getting at is, we're not, like, this isn't a big project, in my humble opinion, so that we can sell this at a huge profit. The the longer picture, the property taxes, the economic development, all the new visitors, there's just so many reasons to move forward on this, and not many good reasons for a beach in my humble opinion.
Thank you, I I think that we also needed to realize that there is a study embedded in this year's work that will look at some of these issues and look at what some of the options are, I doubt that a beach is likely to be on that list, but there are also options that will be explored in terms of how you approach developers, understanding the component costs, costs that are would be associated with, but also the potential revenue stream for a developer. Hence, the studies that were undertaken this year, looking at gross floor area by type, looking at taxation in potential taxation revenues and and cost to build out. A lot of the questions you're asking are the sorts, you know, we've get too far into this, we'll have to win the clothes, because we're talking about is what we're going to use as our tools to bargain with people. Seawall being one, remediation being another, potential build out to the Uh, seawall being one, remediation being another, potential build out to the plan and what the revenue generated to a developer. And then a developer will have to come up with a proposal and we'll have to decide whether or not what's the best approach. So I think it's a question of my perspective of stay tuned. Uh, and this year will will take us a lot further to the understanding where we're going to be to Counselor Oshewski's vision, if you like, of what potential is down the road. Uh, Councilor Maine, I'll take a question from you and then I think we should probably move on.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just a question for, um, Mr. Kernahan or any of the board members. Um, I've talked about it before and I'll bring it up again, is just on, on sustainable development and some of the environmental, you know, uh, things that we hope for the the site. You know, the master plan talks about maybe looking at, you know, green buildings or, uh, you know, lead, uh, neighborhood design, those types of things. Um, a lot of those are just basically nice to have asks. Is there any way that we can require the development to certain, uh, hit certain environmental standards? Or is it basically kind of like a negotiation where if you give us, you know, we're trying to get as much awesome public realm features, so we might actually maybe not require all of the, you know, features of environmental features for buildings. Is there a way of, um, not just asking nicely, but actually requiring some of these, um, uh, green policies, green building policies, if you if you if you will, uh, into the development?
Mr. Kernahan.
Well, in in response, the answer is yes. Uh, the official plan just passed, uh, does incorporate the planning principles from the master plan. And in that there are requirements or suggestions that we build sustainably. And that's certainly the intention. So it it is seen by the board as being a component part of the development that is sustainable. And it incorporates many of the things that I know are near to your heart, John.
Well, well, thank you for that. I know there's one piece I I've mentioned it before, but there talked about strat agreements. And this would be a new tool for us in which you could have, you know, a green roof and that roof part could actually be publicly owned. And, uh, so that was kind of a fun, interesting thing that you could, you could basically have buildings, but on top of them have green space. And so I think that's a desire that a lot of people in the community would like to see. So it's fun to talk about these, uh, environmental ideas. But obviously, uh, when the rubber hits the road, we know that it's harder to be able to find all the money for all the fun environmental ideas. So very much appreciated. Uh, your comments on that. Thanks, Bill.
You, counselor. So, um, I I think we'll move along. So I have a motion here, but by moved by Councilor Maine, seconded by Counselor Downer, that the presentation regarding the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, December twenty twenty update be received as information. Uh, counsel, you've heard the motion, uh, all in favor. Thank you. That carries. Uh, next we have, um, the twenty nineteen audit financial statements and the appointment of an auditor. And I, back to Mr. Kernahan.
So just, uh, recently added to the agenda were the draft audited statements that have been approved by the board. The reason that they still remain as draft is that the auditor has not taken them off and finalized them, but the content doesn't change. Though you have received and seen the audited financial statements. Though they're there, the board has approved them and we are asking that you receive those for information. Are there any questions?
Also questions for Mr. Kernahan. Councilor Maine.
Um, uh, is there thoughts about, um, a rethinking the executive director position? Or is there, um, a recruitment underway for, uh, a consultant or a staff member to fill that, uh, role? And you mentioned that the the board members have been volunteering their time, but, uh, is there, uh, thoughts of bringing somebody else on board?
Do you have something more germane to the audited statements in the auditor?
I apologize. That's, uh, I'm asking twenty twenty-one budgets as opposed to audit it. I apologize. I withdraw the question.
Uh, no, sir. Kernahan, you've heard the question. Care to answer?
Um, albeit it has nothing to do with two thousand and nineteen. I did mention that the executive director that we did hire, we have still put a budget in for such a position in two thousand and twenty-one. And that is something that we're going to be considering at an upcoming board meeting of how we want to address the executive director position for two thousand and twenty-one, or whether we continue with a small working group. We're not sure as yet. We have budgeted for one. We'll see whether we actually decide we need one at this point. At some point later, when things get even more heated, we probably will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, any questions with respect to the audited statements and the appointment of an auditor? Seeing none, uh, I have a motion by.
Mayor Strather, uh, you'll notice the motion doesn't say draft, um, audited. So I'm just thinking, um, that perhaps it should be changed to, um, read that the, um, that that the draft Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation audited final financial statements. So just change approved to draft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved by Councilor Maine, seconded by Counselor Downer, that the draft Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation audited financial statements for the year ending twenty, sorry, December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, be received as information. And that BDO Canada LLP be appointed as the external auditor for the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation for the calendar years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two with the option for two one-year extensions. Counsel, you've heard the motion. Comments or questions on that? Seeing none, uh, all in favor. Thank you. That carries. Next on the agenda, we have, um, presentation again by Mr. Kernahan with respect to a potential designation opportunity. Mr. Kernahan.
Thank you. Um, at a, at the special meeting in September, we presented you with a vision. The vision being that Midland Bay Landing is a unique opportunity for the revitalization of Midland and North Simcoe, for the transformation of the harbor, to create a destination for residents and visitors, to create a catalyst for growth and innovation, and to create an economic engine for Midland and beyond. But the vision for Midland Bay Landing is bigger than just buildings, bricks and mortar, promenades and parks. The corporation's mandate actually extends to supporting long-term economic and community growth and to foster innovation. By acting as a catalyst that causes a change, Midland Bay Landing becomes the change agent for that economic and community growth mandate and to also for revitalization, transformation, growth and innovation within the town and the wider region. And as we've said before, the board has investigated a potential global designation opportunity that would become that catalyst for change by being the branding and marketing driver for Midland and the region. The opportunity really started when the town began its revitalization of the King Street revitalization that just opened. At that point, the excitement for transformation began. This led to a discussion of how to create a new brand for the town. A town that was shaped by the concept of a smart town plugged into the digital world, built sustainably and attracts investment and newcomers to share Midland's small urban lifestyle as an alternative to the dense GTA area and its cost of living. A strong global partner with world credibility was needed to meld the natural, cultural and economic priorities envisioned in the new Midland entity. UNESCO has those ingredients. UNESCO means United Nations Education, Science, Culture and Communication Organization. UNESCO is a global network of experience, expertise, potential partnership and investment. UNESCO brings the power of good of a hundred and ninety-one countries committed to the knowledge sharing ideal of UNESCO. Cities and towns who fly that UN flag commit to those values and ideals. Association with UNESCO can inform the development, identity, reputation and brand of the town as a place that has world significance. UNESCO can in fact be a very powerful ally to successful development. The corporation's plan is to be, uh, designated a UNESCO global geopark for Midland and the region. Geo parks are single unified geographical areas where sites and landscapes of international geological significance are managed through a holistic concept of protection, education and sustainable development. Geo parks celebrate earth heritage and sustain local communities. They showcase the relationships between people and nature. At present, there are a hundred and sixty-one UNESCO global geo parks in forty-four countries, including four in Canada, plus six more aspiring geo parks. In Canada, we have one in Newfoundland, Perse Rock, Tumblr Ridge in B C in the Rocky Mountains and Stonehammer in New Brunswick. You take a look at Stonehammer Geo Park in New Brunswick, which became North America's first geo park. Geo Park, uh, Stonehammer says it is about geology, but it's about people, society and culture. Their lives are shaped by the geology, where they settle, the landscape, the crops they grow, natural hazards, water resources, climate, what they mine and the energy they use. They're all linked back to geology. Since designation in two thousand and fifteen, the area around, uh, Stonehammer, which is Saint John, tourism has blossomed in Saint John, including the five adjoining towns in the Bay of Fundy area. New businesses have been created and are flourishing and the local economy grew. That's what it can do for Midland. The primary goals of a geo park are to promote sustained, inclusive and sustainable economic growth, full and productive employment and decent work for all. To ensure inclusive and equitable quality education and promote lifelong learning opportunities for all. And to make cities and human settlements inclusive, safe, resilient and sustainable. Those geo park goals are really aligned with the vision for Midland Bay Landing and the planning principles described in the existing master plan that were developed through significant public consultation. These are further reasons why the corporation is pursuing a geo park designation. Already, Midland in the area has the physical assets, geography, culture and history components of a geo park. It is the gateway already to the world famous Georgian Bay thirty thousand islands UNESCO World Biosphere. And as you probably know, that stretches all the way from the Severn River to the French River up the east side of Georgian Bay. Joining the UNESCO global network will enable the exchange of ideas, experiences and builds many valuable cultural, economic and trade benefits. The vast spectrum of UNESCO programs, activities, research projects and more are available to help transform communities like ours into creative, innovative, healthier, wealthier towns that also attract committed high-value investors. Having an ASCO Geo Park designation will enhance development and investment opportunities, not hinder them, benefiting the whole area by expanding tourism with new global tourists. Geo Park designation will act as the catalyst for branding and marketing of Midland Bay Landing, Midland and the broader region. Imagine having the UNESCO Geo Parks Canada located in Midland Bay Landing. That's a hub for research and education into local and indigenous culture and trade. Imagine being a member of UNESCO's Creative Cities Program, a network of two hundred and ten cities in twenty-one countries. Our multi-use harbor can anchor the scientific and educational programs with retail, restaurants, a hotel and convention center, adjoining the waterfront promenade and park space. Midland Bay Landing becomes an iconic example of geo-human design principles. The UNESCO Geo Park designation sends a strong message of excellence, research, culture and prosperity for communities like Midland who are aspiring to evolve into the new world economy and a changing planet. Sherry, can we have this slide? The Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation is going to commission a study to develop a vision and positioning for a UNESCO global geo park. The, and the study will talk about the process, stages and timeline required to obtain a Geo Park designation through UNESCO and the budget required to achieve that designation in the future. Estimated cost of this study, which is really initial one, is approximately fifty thousand, which we will fund from the county grant funds we've already received, and I mentioned before. So that is the new potential designation, a UNESCO Geo Park, Global Geo Park. We would join this big network and we would be proud to fly that flag and it will be a significant catalyst. So in addition to talking about seawalls and other things, this is far beyond the bricks and mortar. This is a huge catalyst for the town. That is our proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Kernahan. Um, I'll open it up the floor to the floor up to questions from counsel for Mr. Kernahan and, um, I really can't see everybody. So let's scroll. Oh, there we go. Questions for Mr. Kernahan. Council Gordon.
Thank you. I'm excited to see this. I mean, we've talked about it in the past, but now it's like in the the public sphere. I think this is great. This is something that doesn't, uh, I don't know, make me bristle as condos and Starbucks do for Midland Bay Landing. So the fantastic, I guess the million dollar question here is how, you know, if we were, if we could pull this off and get that designation, which would be absolutely fantastic for for Midland, like there's, I'm, you might find, find me not to be an ally in some things, but I would be a hundred percent your ally if this is what we're going for. But this seems to fly in the face of the plans that we've been talking about and selling up to now for what, you know, we've visioned being developed on this property. Um, well, I mean, when it comes to people's perception then of condos and Starbucks, uh, so this designation that we're talking about, is it specifically for the Midland Bay Landing? Or is it for the entire town of Midland? Or is it for North Simcoe? What's its epicenter? And, you know, quite frankly, what are our odds? And this is a great aspiring thing to do, but really what are, how many boxes do we, do we realistically check at doing this and for spending the fifty grand to look at it?
Kernahan.
Well, in response, um, becoming a Geo Park is something that is not just for Midland Bay Landing. This is for a, the town and the broader area around the town, the region. The study that we're going to look at is to develop a, a vision and positioning to develop a strategy for us being successful in our application to become that designated Geo Park. As I said, we have huge assets and many of the things that the Geo Park look for, we already have them. We already are the gateway to another UNESCO biosphere. So this is not about Midland Bay Landing. We initiated the idea, but this is for something way bigger than the forty acre property on the waterfront. This is about tourism, economic development, sustainability. If you look at the Stonehammer example, after they got their designation, brand new businesses started to sprout up. And as I said earlier, this has become a real economic driver. So we have talked about the physical bricks and mortar that might be on the Midland Bay Landing site. This is not in conflict at all. This is complimentary to the plans for Midland Bay Landing. And we have seen and we've heard that this is not a impediment development. It is the opposite. It really helps. It really helps to foster development and puts us on a much broader stage than just locally here.
That's good.
So like, really, this, this is fantastic. Okay, like, I'm very positive about this. I've Googled it while you're, while you're talking about it, and I'm looking at Stonehammer, like it's, this is, it really does look amazing. Is this something that really that your corporation should be spearheading? Or should this be something the town and our four municipalities be getting together, you know, and co-funding, quite frankly? Because it impacts us all positively and really let you guys focus more on, again, you know, stay in your lane of Midland Bay Landing and let us run with this, using, you know, there's no reason not using your help. But this, to me, sounds a lot bigger than Midland Bay Landing, and it's something that will have, as you say, spin-off effects all over our region. So does it make sense to burden you guys with this, or should we be pulling that back to our staff?
In response, we said, I've mentioned that we have initiated the idea. It's not our intention to end up managing all of this. As you succinctly said, we have other things to do. But this is complementary. All of these things have to dovetail together. Who ultimately manages and spearheads this is still to be determined. That's part of talking through and working through this study because the governance model is part of the application. So we would need to work with others as partners. First of all, we need to get them to agree to be partners. But we would have to work with them to develop a governance model to carry this application through. And then upon designation, it's ongoing because now we are part of a global network, and we're going to benefit from it. So tourism and economic development are completely woven into it. Who runs that? We don't know yet.
All right. Well, thanks. I'm intrigued by this, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. It's, it's, it sounds amazing, you know, assuming we can pull this off.
No, I see you've just flown in, so you wanted to just say something.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reinforce, you know, Chair Kernahan of the Midland Bay, his remarks on this. And I think, I think we are being very pragmatic in terms of how we're stepping through this potential opportunity. The study, I think, will come back with, I think, really relevant information that we're all going to be interested in. What is the scope of this potential designation? How much would it potentially cost? What are the potential benefits of it? I think we all have some, some notion of what the benefits are, but I'm hoping that will be crystallized in more accurate data that we can actually look at and peg some numbers to. So I think that the study is a very important aspect of what this could deliver. Full kudos to the, to the board for bringing this forward as a catalyst idea. I think I absolutely agree with them. It, it embraces everything from what I've seen of the, of the plans for Midland Bay. The characteristics of the UNESCO Geo Park are exactly what we're trying to develop at Midland Bay. And that sustainable aspect of what you can develop and bringing that to a community with the natural assets that we have, I think are the opportunity. I think too many people obviously are confused by what the plans may be at the site. They're, they're fearful of some things that may go on, but I'm, I'm telling you, and most of us here who have seen the plans, I really think it's a thoughtful plan, and it's thoughtful because it was done with a tremendous amount of input from the public. You know, and that, that has to be appreciated. And to have it be embraced by the United Nations Geo Park, which has similar characteristics, I think just further reinforces that work. So I'm very anxious, like the rest of you, to see what the study will bring, and then we'll determine how far and who gets involved with the next stage, should we all decide to pursue that.
You'll forget to unmute. Thank you, Mr. Dino. I think it's important, too, to realize that there are a lot of moving parts that will add up to, and can, like, for example, we're going to talk about cruise ships later this evening. Within the cruise ships, we're talking about developing experiential packages for those people who come in here on the cruise ship, so they actually stay here. UNESCO designation just amplifies that. Part of the application to OSEP, which was the funding application, was the notion that there's millennia of history here, both commercial with the indigenous peoples, cultural with the indigenous peoples, transitioning through first contact and beyond. There's a story to be told. There's a fantastic interest to people in Europe and beyond, and frankly, to ourselves that we can learn from. It all adds up, and, and really, when you start looking at the boxes that need to be ticked, a lot of them are. And we do have those assets here, we're saying natural assets. It's natural that we have First Nations peoples here who've been here for a long time. We've learned from them. They used, we used their trade routes and so on. And you just follow that golden thread all the way through. A lot of the activities that are, are happening here just because of that opportunity. So personally, I think it's a phenomenal, phenomenal opportunity to partner with people all over the globe. And just the exercise of going through the application is really going to help us to focus on what's here and how we can use those assets more to our benefit and get that word out there. So I really appreciate the idea, the fact that the corporation sourced that and is bringing it to the table. Councilor Cunningham.
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, I'm also very excited about this and just want to mention that our Cultural Alliance, which is a cooperation of our five local councils. With the Cultural Alliance, we expand into Bosley First Nation Council, as being a partner of ours, is a wonderful organization that has recently sprung up. We celebrated our first birthday in November. And I think something that's important there is to realize we just got a exceed grant for a cultural asset mapping project. So maybe that's something that can tie into this. It's starting to roll out in the next few months. So hopefully, that asset mapping will jointly combine with this study and partnership there as well.
Thank you.
Think of the Cultural Alliance, ECDNS, there are many ingredients that are already in place. We now need to embrace all of that to generate this designation. And I think we have so many of the assets already in place. You probably need to articulate them better, but this is a great opportunity to do what we are really looking to do, like they say, to celebrate the earth heritage, but more importantly, for us, for the sustainable local community. And that's not just Midland. It's the whole of the region. And as part of the study is, what is the region of the Geo Park? We have so many things already, and you've already mentioned some of them, Sherry, that we have the First Nations, we have the different townships. We need to work on that collectively, and I think this is a home run.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Kernahan, read the designation opportunity, UNESCO. Councilor Gordon.
When is this, I mean, short of us talking about it, and it's going to be on YouTube eventually, when is this going to hit the press releases so people can start to look into it themselves and understand what it is we've just suggested tonight?
Kernahan.
You have hit on something that we've already discussed, that now that it has been announced tonight publicly this way, we want to do a press release to go and announce this the broader set publicly.
I think this is just also just to add to that, it's, it's the beginning of a process. I think the phrase, all the current phraseology in today's lingo is we're going to socialize it now, take it out to the other communities, decide what communities those are, various agencies will have inputs, and just start now to generate some excitement, find partners, champions for various aspects of it. And then to your earlier question, Councilor Gordon, it may well be that it becomes its own entity with partners contributing to it and based on municipal interests, venue interests, and so on. That remains to be seen, but this is now a bit of a process, socializing it to the other municipalities, potential partners.
If I could make a suggestion, this is the kind of vision that is sold very, very well through short video, little vignettes, either that we can, you know, acquire without copyright stuff that's already produced from UNESCO, maybe have some voiceovers, some nice aerial shots, and I have people with airplanes, just really communicating what this could be, rather than making people read white papers or links on websites. Because, you know, there'll be an automatic sort of negative kickback to this. And I see this as a really good oper, well, you know, there's going to be, right? Like, there's some people that are always, you know, negative. So I just see this as a real opportunity to maybe use some multimedia to get the initial messaging out. And I know we have the talent in our community, if not on staff, to do that. So it just, I know I'm getting a bit in the weeds here, but I think it would, the, one of the best ways to try and sell this would be with the beautiful visuals, like the stuff I'm seeing online when I'm Googling the UNESCO sites and really trying to sell people on what this could look like if we're successful in our application.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Good suggestion. Pictures do sell.
Any further comments or questions for Mr. Kernahan before I bring a motion forward? Seeing none, then I have a motion moved by Councilor Post, seconded by Councilor Oshavsky. That's the presentation regarding the potential designation opportunity be received for information. Council, you've heard the motion. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? That carries. Thank you. That brings us to the next item, which is a confirmation of the Board of Directors. And I guess this goes back to you, Mr. Kernahan, or Madam Clark, any suggestions?
I did, I did ask this in advance. I think this is the town confirming to the corporation, the Board of Directors.
Okay, so thank you. Then what I'll do is we have a motion here for confirmation of Board of Directors, which is moved by Councilor Downer, seconded by Councilor Cunningham, that the Board of Directors for the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation be confirmed as follows. Bill Kernahan, Director and Chair, John McIntyre, Director and Vice Chair, Robert Barber, Director, Zach Douglas, Director, Tina Fazio, Director, Mayor Sturz Drather, and Director, Deputy Mayor Ross, Director. As to proposed board, that is the existing board, and is proposed to remain same by this motion. Comments or questions with regard to that? Councilor Gordon.
Just a quick question on remuneration. I know it was mentioned earlier that some people have elected not to collect their stipends for participation. And we all see the same social media stuff. I just wanted to let you guys put on the record that I believe that neither you nor the Deputy Mayor collect that remuneration, so I just thought it would be, this would be a good time and a place to formalize that, so there's no ambiguity.
You are correct. We do not. Thank you.
And there is one other board member that does not collect any remuneration.
That, that's lovely, and thank you guys for your service for that.
So thank you, Counselors, for their clarification there. Any further comments with respect to the board? Okay, so well, then seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Which brings us to German, but just prior to the German, I'd like to personally thank on behalf of the town of Midlands, both the corporation and the residents, the board's efforts in bringing us this far and navigating through uncharted waters, so to speak, in terms of understanding the particular peculiarities or peculiarities of this particular project, bringing their experience to bear to deal with those, and also to always be on the lookout for opportunity and to handle some of these development opportunities with good gloves and diligence. So thank you to the board for your service and looking forward to working with you another year and getting that MOE clearance for record of site condition and look out after that. So thank you to the board. With that, I'll be quiet, just ask, move, move by Council again, sorry. That doesn't quite work. Move by.
Oh, your worship, just, just before you do, sorry, and there's no real spot for extra stuff in here. But in that, on that YouTube video, I watched at the last meeting, there was a mention that the MOE wanted some kind of write-back about pregnant women using the property or being on the property. And for anybody that's watching that, I was just wondering, can I, is there any risk to pregnant women walking or using on, using that property right now that has flagged this request? It just seems kind of bizarre.
Anybody care to answer, anybody on this call, Mr. Campbell, I see you there. Do you care to make her to make clarification on that one, please?
Through your worship to Councilor Gordon. Yeah, the ministry gave responses just on our, the document that was submitted that's looking at the risk assessment. So they have a lot of criteria that you have to comment on, and that was just one of the items they brought up that they wanted some more details on. So is there a risk today? Nobody should be walking on that site today anyways. It is fenced off. You won't get sick, but if you are, you know, the, the risk assessment looks at children eating the dirt, people working on the site and getting dust and so forth on them. And the risk analysis is looking at these different receptors and to make sure they're addressed. So is there a concern? There's always a concern for all individuals working around contaminated materials, and the purpose of the study is to demonstrate how you are protecting those individuals. And the ministry just asked for more information as part of the review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So I have moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Councilor Maine, that this special meeting of Council for Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation Annual General Meeting adjourned at six forty-five P.M. All in favor?
Your worship?
Yes.
Did you do the confirmatory bylaw motion?
Oh, sorry. No, I did not. So we've done the presentation. Moved by Council, sorry, Council, moved by Councilor Gordon, seconded by Councilor Oshavsky, that bylaw twenty twenty-six-nine being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the Special Meeting of Council, Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, Annual General Meeting held on December ninth, twenty twenty, be passed and enacted. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries enough. Now we get to the long-awaited motion that this special move by Councilor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Councilor Maine, that this Special Meeting of Council, Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation Annual General Meeting adjourned at six forty-five P.M. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Thank you, Council. We'll see you back here at seven or the regular meeting.
Merry Christmas. Thank you very much.